All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the South Salt Lake City Council work meeting. It is Wednesday, October 29th, 2025. The time is 6:02 PM. My name is Sharla Bynum. I will be conducting. I need to excuse Nick Mitchell and Corey Thomas. Is Paul online? Okay, hopefully Councilmember Sanchez will be joining us online. We have five matters up for discussion and we will go ahead and start. Oh, first of all, thank you to all staff and anyone who's here visiting us and watching us online. We will start with discussion of an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council amending the 2025-2026 fiscal year budget. We will turn the time over to Crystal. Here she comes. Thank you, Crystal. If you'll come on up. We probably got started than you were expecting. Faster than you were expecting. Yeah, are you, are you okay if we switch order real quick? Okay, we're gonna move on. We'll, we'll come back to you. Crystal, is it okay if we put you towards the end? Okay, we're gonna move on to item number two, Water Resource Element in the General Plan Update. We'll turn the time over to Jed Shum.
Perfect. Good evening, Council. I'm Jed Shum, a city planner from Community Development. Grateful to be in front of you today on this work meeting. And the project that I'll be talking about today is the General Plan Water Resource Update, Element Update. So a quick overview of the, of this project is that Starvis Staff is proposing an amendment to the South Salt Lake General Plan 2040 to comply with state requirements to develop a water use and preservation element that is integrated with land use planning and development. This proposed Water Resource Element update to the South Salt Lake General Plan is required by SP 110, which is passed in 2022. So here are the four sections that are required to be included in this update. This update will not, will not lead to any immediate changes to the municipal code. This update will more serve as a guidance on the city's future water conservation efforts. So at the moment, South Salt Lake City actually has achieved significant progress in water conservation. We have decreased per capita water use by more than 21%, which is on track to meet the state's water conservation goals and targets. And with this update, the goal is, the goal is to provide more guidance and to increase more focus for future development and code amendments to include considerations on water conservation efforts and efficient water usage. At the same time, this update hopes to increase awareness of the connection between water usage and land use, which are more interconnected than we might think. And throughout this update, in the general plan, more awareness will be raised during future development processes and provide better coordination between agencies and departments in achieving the cities and states' water conservation goals. So Section 1 is effect of permitted development on water demand and infrastructure. So in this section of the update, it will primarily focus on the current water supply and demand in the city and also the projected future water demand and supply, and then comparison and differences between the two. In Section 2, Methods for Reducing Water Demand and Per-Capital Consumption for Existing Developments. In this section, the update will try to identify main sources of water waste and efficient water usage in the city and then address the conservation goals in the city on water and then different water conservation methods implemented by the city. And then also points out the sections in our code that address efficient water usage and water conservation. And then here in Section 3, Methods for Reducing Water Demand and Per-Capital Consumption for Future Development. So in this section, it will compare between the projected future water demand at full buildout and planned water supply at full buildout. And what buildout means is like the total amount of water that will be needed when all the developments are still maybe in planning phases or still in under construction and etc., when they're completely finished and fully populated, and then what that number of water demand is. And then the same thing for water supply built out is when all the future water supply are, that are still in the planning phase and whatnot, when they're fully developed, what the number will look like, and then the comparison between the two. And then also this section will talk about plans and methods of acquiring additional water supply, like additional wells and things like that. And then different recommended actions to help ensure that the city would have sufficient water source capacity in the future. Lastly, in Section 4, Opportunities to Modify Operations to Eliminate or Reduce Conditions That Waste Water. So the first thing is, it talks, this section will talk about additional water conservation measures for future implementation. And then it will explore partnership between the city and water agencies for further and more efficient water conservation efforts that include like Utah Division of Water, which have helped consulting us on this update. And then it, they, they help provide us with water efficiency standards and different things like that. And the efforts in coordinating with these different water agencies will help. The efforts will include like actions like continue to update on the municipal water efficiency and conservation-related code requirements. And then in efforts to, and then these efforts will help us to be more in line with the continued updating state water conservation goals and targets and help us to be in line with the state basically and, and continue to improve our efficiency on water usage. And then we'll also improve the coordination between water conservation and land use planning to promote sustainable growth. So that includes, that, that includes coordination between the cities' internal departments like Public Works, Neighborhood, and Community Development on the, on the city water conservation efforts. Through integrated efforts, city departments can become well-versed in optimal approaches to water conservation and efficient water usage across the city's diverse duties and services. So once again, this update will not propose any immediate changes to the municipal code, but this will serve as more as a guidance to provide increased focus for future development and co-amendment to consider and involve water conservation efforts and efficient water usage. So through this update in the general plan, the city will continue to explore and adopt new technologies, best practices, and educational programs that are proven to reduce water consumption and demand. And ultimately, with this update, we wish that, it will help us ensure that South Salt Lake City remains at the forefront of water conservation and by continually improving our approach to manage the city's water resources for both current residents and future generations. And the next step, so this, this project is happening concurrently with the Mobility Plan that Corey's working on and will present later tonight, but we will have separate resolutions. And then today, we're here at the work meeting to show you the, this project and for you to ask us any questions or, or any comments. And then next Thursday on November 6th, this project will go in front of Planning Commission on a regular meeting for a public hearing and a recommendation. And then November 12th, we'll, I'll be back in front of you on a regular meeting for it with the final version of document and for the adoption of this update. Thank you.
Any questions? Clarissa?
Okay, sorry about that. You'd mentioned that the, that it was a decrease of 21%. What is that timeline? From what date did that decrease down?
Yeah, that number was from 2000s to the, when the, when we, when we adopted our last water conservation plan that we are still implementing today. That number is from that plan showing where we are at. And maybe Craig can, will have the more nailed down.
Most of this data that Jed has pulled is data from our Public Works Department. And so all of that is from them, and so we can get that information from you. I think that document is published, so we would have to verify with Public Works to make sure that that document isn't like a working document, but most, if not all of this, is just data that we've put in a more like presentable way to put it more in line with our general plan to make it format better and to make it fit with the state standards for how they want it to meet the general plan requirements.
Okay, just wanna say thank you for this effort. I think it's great to hear that. Just looking forward to more of the results. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to item number three. So Eliza and Grace will just stay there and be talking about an application for a street name change for Bugatti Avenue to Bell Haven.
Thank you. So I'm here. I don't know if you guys have seen a street name change application before. I know this is the first one I have done since I've been with the city in four and a half years. But there is a street in the downtown district on the right-hand side. You can kind of see the zoomed out area. It's across from RC Willie on Third West. It's Bugatti Avenue. And we have an application to change the name from Bugatti Avenue to New Bell Haven Way. There are currently four parcels that have the name Bugatti Avenue in their addresses, so it doesn't affect a lot of properties. And all of those properties, except for one, which is UTA, are owned by the same property owner. You can kind of see the four properties. The numbers are on there. When I switched it to this presentation, the background of the numbers came off. I apologize. So it's kind of hard to see those four parcels. But this is the section. This is all Bugatti Avenue. It's just this tiny little strip in the city. So it's not a big street. That is, Bugatti Avenue is just the small segment. And so the purpose for this name change is because the developer, if you remember, is the Bell Haven Village. That's the master plan. They were here about a month or so ago showing us that. They have a project on Third West and Abbey, Andy Avenue that is gonna be done soon, and they want to start branding that building. And they want to have that correct address when they are doing that branding. And their end goal is to vacate all of these roads in this development and privatize them, but that's, they're not there quite yet, and so they want to rename the street so they can have that branding out there and they don't need to switch their address for all the new tenants coming in and have that confusion. And they also want to relocate that street once they vacate. And so there are some things that we're working on with the developer internally, but this is just like the very first step. Typically, we would just tell them to wait until they can do the vacation and plat. But with this new building coming online soon, there's more of a time crunch, which is why they have paid this application fee. Normally, it would all just be paid with a vacation and subdivision plat, but they've opted to pay a separate fee to come here and do this. Along with this, they would also be paying to change all the street names and do all that, so it wouldn't be at the city's fee. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but it will be before you at your next meeting as well.
Okay, any questions concerned at this time? All right. Thank you, Eliza. Appreciate your work on this. All right, we're moving on to discussion. Item for a resolution of the South Salt Lake City Council adopting the Mill Creek and Meadow Brook Station Area Plan. We will invite Spencer Collier.
Okay, good evening, Council. Thank you for giving us this time this evening to discuss the Meadow Brook and Mill Creek Station Area Plan. We are joined this evening by our consulting team with Design Workshop and Fair and Peers. We are excited for this to be, at this point, this has been a very fast process, but it has been a very fruitful one. So we are excited to share those findings with you. Last time we were, before council was back in July, so there's been quite a bit that has been updated since then, so we'll turn it over to Chris.
Thanks for having me, Council. Good to see you tonight. We are here to talk about, again, the Mill Creek and Meadow Brook Stationary Plans. We are here as a reminder, because the state, back then, I think it was 2022, passed HB 462, which requires all cities with fixed rail stations to prepare stationary plans for half-mile radius around the station. So this is a requirement of the state. It, another requirement of that bill was to have these approved by the communities and UTA by December 31st of 2025, which is why this process went as quickly as it did. But just real quickly, a statement about the project. We're, we're looking at Mill Creek and Meadow Brook together for, for a reason, and that is that their half-mile radius, as you can see on the, on the images on the screen, are overlapping, and it really makes sense to make sure that we're considering those stations holistically when, when they do have very similar geographies. So again, Mill Creek on 3300 South and, and Meadow Brook on 3900 South. Meadow Brook is shared. The station area is shared by Mill Creek under the South, so we've been working in partnership with both cities during this process. Really good opportunity in this loc, or in these locations for stationary planning, in particular because these are two of the most culturally and economically diverse neighborhoods in the city. As you know, we've got historically industrial land uses, some older single-family neighborhoods, but you're seeing a lot of new infill, higher density infill residential development happening along the I-15 corridor and specifically related to, to both of these stations, as well as the Murray North Station to the South. So with that economic and, and social diversity, cultural diversity comes, it's an opportunity to really create catalytic nodes for growth within these stationary plans, really thinking about increasing walkability, transit connectivity, and then thinking, you'll see a lot about what we've thought about it, opportunity sites to really start to catalyze the development that the communities want to see in these station areas. So just again, a closer look at the project area. You can't see it very well, but I-15 is within the five-minute radius of each of the stations. One thing to note in here is, you'll see a pretty, a pretty good dart of green within those stationary circles. There's one park, and that's Harmony Park down north of 3900 South, so something that we've, we've considered throughout the course of this, this process. Just a couple of views of the station is to get, to kind of help you locate things. Again, Mill Creek Station, this is roughly over the frontrunner tracks looking east along 3300 South. You've got the station on the upper left side of the screen. We've identified some opportunity sites. You can see that lower, lower left side of the screen. And then we've taken a look at Wasatch Better Recycling and Wasatch Steel as a, as a potential opportunity to see development within the area. For Meadow Brook Station, this is actually looking west along 3900 South. You can see the park and ride on the lower right at the station itself as well. Important opportunity here, 3300 West, as you're aware, is a UDOT street. Tougher to make plans around that. 3900 South is not a UDOT road. So we've looked at better opportunities, particularly here to, to create that more pedestrian comfort and, and opportunity for access. South Salt Lake Community College is kind of in the middle on that, on that west side of the tracks. That is no longer in use by, by the college, so a good state-owned opportunity to again, meet the goals of, of the stationary planning process, which are on the screen here. So these goals really do come from the state and, and were, were agreed to by both of the communities. So number one, identifying the economic potential for the areas around station areas. I'm really thinking about transit-oriented communities, so a mix of uses that gives people services and goods where they live. Focusing on catalytic projects that will trigger change. UTA is especially interested in what we can do or what they can do on their properties. Most of their stations are overparked, so there are, there are certainly development properties that they're interested in, in going out to develop for RFP, and, and they may do that here as well. One of the big goals of HB 462 is to increase housing opportunity and housing choice, both for sale, for rent. So really thinking about a diversity of housing types for different ages and groups and incomes. Promoting, promoting sustainable environmental conditions. How can we really promote transit more and get more carts, cars off the road? Improving safety around the stations. We heard a lot through community engagement about the need to make sure that people feel more safe in these, these areas. As, as they change from industrial uses, hopefully we see that, but really making an effort to think about that early on. Again, increasing transportation choices and then involving key stakeholders. UTA, UDOT, WFRC, property owners, business owners, residents, all those were at the table during the course of this expediated process. Speaking of process, we started in April. This, most of the stationary plans that we've done take 12 to 14 months. Here we are, I think, in month seven, so it has been a quick process, but we've had very engaged, very engaged community engagement. Staff has been wonderful to work with through this, and we've been able to, I think, make the, make the outreach count for these stations and really get the feedback that, that we were hoping to achieve on this. So from an engagement standpoint, three different kind of windows engagement. At first, we started out with, with visioning and, and making sure that we were talking to people about what, what, what should these stations look like in the future? What are the opportunities? We don't come, we don't come to communities with ideas first. We let the ideas come to us from the communities, and then we shape those through the alternative development phase, which is phase two. So in the opening phase, we, we did in-person pop-ups at the stations. We, we came to the mural fest to get information. We have an online story map for this. So really talking to people where they are. In, in this case, given the, the, the nature of the folks who live in these neighborhoods, they were, they're probably not gonna come out to a lot of public meetings, so just making sure that we're going where they are and getting the feedback from them. During the alternatives development, we had a two-day charrette near, we're right at the Meadow Brook Station, invited stakeholders to come in and really start thinking about what are the opportunities here? We used a really fun Lego exercise that we thought about, both land use and density and building height, to, to get people to think about what the opportunities were there. Your staff built a lot of buildings, and that was just a really, that was a really fun opportunity to, to engage with folks. But importantly, it gave us the direction to go forward with, again, those catalytic sites, and how do we think about connectivity and other aspects of it? And finally, we're, we're here sharing out the, the plan as it is. We were at Mill Creek on Monday night, talking to the council, and we're here tonight to share it with you. From a metric standpoint, we were able to talk to about 370 folks across 12 different meetings and events. Again, mostly where people were. Also, again, we had that invited open house where we brought stakeholders together. So we had an opportunity to get feedback, boots on the ground, people who were getting off the train, getting on the train. So really just an opportunity to catch people where they were. We did do a survey during the course of the early part of the summer. 264 respondents. You can see the map here. That's a heat map that's showing where the respondents were, were, or live. So a lot of folks, particularly in that, in that Brook Station area, but throughout this, throughout both communities responding to, to this. The colors, I don't, I don't think we need to get into the bar graphs, but on the right, I'll get some more to use more ideas about what we heard, but we did break it down by station area so that we understood what the difference was, were between the station areas and the questions that we asked. So from the survey, some of the key themes that we heard across both stations were, again, protecting connectivity for pedestrians and cyclists, really making sure that there's safe and secure places for people to walk comfortably, increasing access to retail and grocery stores. A lot of, a lot of talk about food desert in these areas, so how can we really start to hopefully bring those businesses, those local neighborhood-serving businesses to these station areas? Prioritizing green space, trees, and environmental resilience. Again, not a lot of open space. Streetscapes are fairly harsh in the, in both areas right now, so how can we really start to think about, about flipping that script a little bit? Enhancing safety and traffic calming, specifically at 33rd and 39th South. How do we really make sure it's easy for, easier for people to get across those streets to access transit? And then supporting affordable housing development, whether it's for sale or for rent. So getting into the recommendations, these are our guiding principles. They're different, they're a little bit different by station, given the, the up-twos that we see in both. So starting at the, at the north in the Mill Creek Station, and this will never not confuse me. I don't know why Mill Creek Station is in the core of South Salt Lake and Meadow Brook Station is in Mill Creek, but it is what it is. But so at Mill Creek, building a series of connected nodes along the 3300 South corridor, promoting community-serving retail and a mix of residential typologies, incentivizing the creation of public spaces at the core of the study area. Again, no open space within the study area today. Facilitating north-south connections on Main Street and, and 200 East, and then developing trail connections along 3300 South to local and regional destinations. Again, a little bit more challenging at Mill Creek because it is a state highway, but we have been talking to UDOT about what the opportunities may be there. For Meadow Brook, the idea here, again, this is, this is South Salt Lake and Mill Creek together, creating a mixed income and mixed generational neighborhood. Again, making sure that we're thinking about inviting folks of all types in. Incorporating, incorporating health and social services into neighborhood development. We heard the need for senior housing, but also the services that come along with that, as well as community-serving uses to help lift up the folks who live in these areas. Orienting development to face 3900 South as the front door. Again, 3900 South being an opportunity to really create a, a front door for, for both communities along that corridor, promoting Main Street as mixed-use core, and then developing, again, regional trail connections, enhancing existing trail connections and making sure that we have access, or we're providing access where access is needed. So from an overall standpoint, regionally, thinking about connectivity. Again, we've got those key north or key east-west pedestrian and bike connections along both 3300 South and 33, 3900 South, connecting existing or planned connections to the Jordan River Trail and, and then to the east. In both, in both cases, we did consult with the North Murray Plan, the Murray North Plan, and the Seven Greenways Plan. So these do, these recommendations do align with what has, the planning that has gone on around these. Two other important connections that, that came up during the process. One was, was this importance of West Temple as a key, a key, I'm, sorry, a key bikeway. So West Temple connects Murray North to Meadow Brook, to Mill Creek and beyond, and really thinking about putting some resources into making that, that the kind of neighborhood bikeway, because it doesn't have the traffic that Main Street is. Main Street, on the other hand, we see as, as neighborhood pedestrian quarter. It, it has bikes on it today, and, and they will likely stay, but really making sure that street feels comfortable and safe for pedestrians and the commerce that they want to experience along that corridor. So those are the two key, key north-south connections. Again, you'll see some connections on 200 East and then some additional connections that, that fall out of some of the other plans that have happened. From a land use standpoint, speaking specifically about South Salt Lake, you already have TOD zones. So we don't have a lot of recommendations or, or changes to future land use. What we want, what we do recommend, though, are some, are some consideration for changes to some of, some things embedded in the TOD code that may be, maybe getting in the way of the type of development that you want to see. There, there are requirements for a minimum amount of, of residential, or I'm sorry, retail space on, on certain TOD projects, for instance, 4,000 square feet. The market may not be, the market may not be there for that right now to require that in every project. And what happens is you get retail spaces sitting empty, or you get some of the uses that you might not want to see popping up regularly in the spaces. So just thinking about, clarifying that as a recommendation. And then the other one is minimum lot size for redevelopment. Again, you do have a fair amount of, of small lots. It's, it's challenging to, to piece those together, but some people are wanting to do interesting projects, so I'm just thinking about right sizing that, that minimum lot size. So getting into the catalytic sites. So again, we looked at the entire half-mile radius, but we really wanted to think about where are the opportunities to start to see investment, encourage investment for the city, for the state to really start to push developers toward things. So again, this is Mill Creek Station. You're seeing 3300 diagonally across the screen there from west on the bottom to east on the top. On the bottom to east on the top, um. In this case, we really see the opportunity site, um, on the south side of, of, uh, thirty-three hundred west. With some of those existing industrial uses, um, so in this case, what we heard a lot, again, was diversity of housing type. Uh, access to retail opportunity, um, so you'll see some high-density retail or residential in there, you'll see mixed-use buildings. Um, then you'll see, you know, lower-density townhomes, stacked flats, so again, opera, offering opportunities for folks of, of all means. Um, to have access to this area, both, uh, for, uh, for rent and for sale. On, the blue building on the north side of thirty-three hundred, at three hundred west, uh, is envisioned as a, a community, community facility. Um, unidentified what that, what that use is, but something again that brings people, um, together that, that serves, um, community needs. Uh, it could be a senior center, it could be a community center, it could be a health center, we don't know what it is, that's, that's for the city to decide. And then really thinking about, uh, the opportunities for, for retail infill as you go down, um, thirty-three hundred, um, south, uh, to the east and west. You'll see a lot of green on thirty-three hundred, we, we have proposed some new street sections that add both, um, wider sidewalks. Planted, uh, planted plant, tree planting strips, um, and a green median, um, again, to just really make sure that that. That street feels much more comfortable for pedestrians, um, understanding that there are traffic issues out there, um, so we'll have to work closely with Carl. And you, uh, not you dot here, um, to make sure that we, uh, are addressing traffic, um, but really opportunities here for. Uh, pedestrian connections and again, bike connections as well, uh, in this case, connecting, um, existing or planned infrastructure improvements to the. To the Jordan River Trail right along, um, thirty-three hundred south. And here's just another view of what that might, that might look like, um, a little bit prettier done, um, thirty-three hundred south again, running the, the same way. Um, so again, just thinking about that kind of this integrated neighborhood, I didn't mention before, and I'll go back to this because you might be able to see it easier. Open space integrated into, um, that new, that new residential neighborhood, in this case, a linear open space that really provides those. Those neighbors with the place to walk their dogs, the kids to go out and play, so, um, really think, thinking again about making sure that we do have parks and open space. Um, in this area. So, Meadowbrook Station, now you can see Harmony Park, the big green, um, shape on, on the. Norse or the, the top side of that image, again, thirty-nine hundred south, um, running diagonally, you've got the salt, the salt. The Salt Lake Community College Property on the lower right, uh, the, um, the hub building, uh, is right at the core with. You'll see an infill site on the, on the, uh, park and ride lot, um, and then some additional, uh, opportunities for. Uh, new development, um, on the Mill Creek side of the street, um, in this case, we, we asked the, the community, you know. A lot about what they wanted to see in this area, and again, we heard about diversity of housing, um, we also, you know, know, um. Thanks to your staff that Salt Lake County is undergoing a, a recreation, uh, master plan right now, and they have identified South Salt Lake as an area that. That is, is an opportunity for it, we thought that, that this property, the Salt, the Salt Lake Community Company property might be an ideal location for that. Directly, um, adjacent to, uh, the transit stop, um, and then an opportunity to build again, a diversity of housing. Um, types, uh, within that area, really kind of, uh, protected as an enclave, uh, from kind of, you know, the, the, some of the. The traffic that, that is happening in this area, so, uh, really rethinking, um, that zone, an infill opportunity, mixed-use infill opportunity with parking structure. On the park and ride, um, so that we can, we can have a shared parking structure, um, that accommodates both transit traffic and that development. While also providing the services that the community needs, and then south of thirty-nine hundred south, and more mixed-use development in Mill Creek. Um, Mill Creek was really interested in, in, again, community center, senior center, in, in this case, is I think what they were thinking about. Um, and a community park, so again, thinking about linking those green spaces, and that's again, why we, another reason we had West Temple as that. Key bike connector, because Harmony Park front, fronts West Temple and some of these opportunities for new open space that we're seeing, um, also, um, front that space, so. Um, again, on thirty, uh, thirty-nine hundred south, uh, more opportunities, um, uh, for, uh, thinking about the street, and I spoke about thirty-three hundred. Like it wasn't a state highway, it is, um, I apologize for that, uh, um, but this is really the opportunity for, um, that. Am I getting myself mixed up? Yeah, this is the, really the opportunity for that traffic calming, um, making sure again that we have those, those pedestrian, comfortable pedestrian en- environments. Both along the street corridor and along the rail corridor, um, so that rail corridor really can start to connect things. Um, one of the big things you may, you may know about HTRZ, which is, um, part of the HB four sixty-two bill. That allows communities to pursue, um, a state TIF, um, i- as long as you meet, uh, certain levels of. Of density and affordability in housing, um, and in this case, you know, or in that case. It's a minimum of fifty units per acre and a minimum of fifty-one percent of, of housing in a mixed-use development. Um, and I think it's thirteen percent affordability, um, um, with the more, more recent changes to that bill, so. If you are willing to, to achieve that density, there is that state TIF, um, that could pay for things like a pedestrian bridge over the tracks at the station. That could connect rec center, uh, across the, to the station itself, and then for the, further beyond to Harmony Park, really, um, connecting people to. Uh, the station in a very meaningful way. And here's a view of that, we've kind of flipped the view, so in this case, um, thirty-nine hundred is, is. Uh, running diagonally the opposite direction, you can see the hub building, um, right below the Meadowbrook Station, um. Uh, call out there, uh, but just, you know, thinking about density, thinking about these opportunities to really create. A bustling community, um, center right around the Meadowbrook Station. So with that, um, we are happy to take questions.
Any questions or comments? We'll start with Ray.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, um, I think at the beginning you mentioned that this has to be approved, not only by the communities, but by UTA as well. How does that process work, say, we approve it, but UTA doesn't, or vice versa?
I wish that we had WFRC, uh, here, um, but I, um. But we do.
Excuse me, uh, my name is Matt Ryan, I'm a community planner that worked, um, with. Design workshops, South Salt Lake and Mill Creek, what will happen is, um, when the city moves to. Adopt the stationary plan, they will then, the planner in this case Spencer, will apply for certification through Wasatch Front. Regional Council, and that's, um, for that official. Recognition of how the plan will be, so.
Is there? How, like, how scrutinized does it get, once it goes to Wasatch Front, depending on what we say as a council? Certain goals that it needs to meet, sorry to cut you off, certain goals, I'm just trying to get more clarity on how that works.
Yes, there are, um, a few pillar goals that the plan will achieve, which have been achieved, um. And so really what the council and also Regional Growth Committee, um, before that, they'll recommend up to the Greater WFRC. Will ensure that all of that, um, the tenants of the stationary playing that we have are met, so. So I could pull those up too, I'm sorry, they're not.
No, no, that's okay.
Right off the top of my head.
All right, Clarissa.
Okay, I live in both, between these, both these stations here, and if I recall back a year ago. We met with the WFRC up at the Mill Creek, um, building, and we talked about, potentially you talked about how. Bike lanes changing in from certain points, and we did talk about something, how the bike lanes is kind of dead ends. At certain points, and we kind of had suggested that it just can keep continuing through, because I do see. I frequent both, a lot of these streets, so here, Main Street and West Temple daily, um. I, I think that, you know, one of the things I know that was brought up was, not even constituents that live there, but people who bike through that, they just feel that it just stops. And they don't like how it just stops and you have to maneuver a certain way, so, and I think we did, when we did talk about this, is to keep a bike lane consistent. Both on West Temple and Main Street, to make that connectivity there, um. Then also, based on the renderings that you're showing, seems like there's a lot of density, which is, you know, something we've been having a lot of conversations with. How does the state or even with UTA, WFRC, how does this play into safety? When we have more people coming in, and then we don't have the public safety enough to handle this part, those are. Issues I'd like to have addressed as well, because safety is one of the biggest things, is we're inviting more bodies into the city. We don't have enough public safety to protect all these people, how does that get aligned into this whole thing that you're, the projects?
I think that's a great question, um, a lot of the development standards that are in place today. Do address that, um. The design for safety specifically, uh, so ensuring that as these developments are coming in, they do take into consideration a lot of that. So that, that will continue through this process, and, and obviously this will not happen overnight, this will gradually happen over the next several decades. Um, so there will be, also be opportunities, um, through, uh, the HTRZ funding as well for us to. Um, ensure that safety is a priority in these areas as they are developed out, because you are correct, they are not. There are not a lot of people in these areas currently.
I don't know if I would say that there's not a lot of people in those areas, because you have homes on. On the east side of the tracks, obviously, but then there are a few on Third West that are there, um. The point after the same thing, going back to that again, is I know, because again, I live, Traxx is right in my front door, um. We do have frequently, I think there's a, I think there's an agreement between UTA and the Railroad Company Pacific Union, I believe. And they have bigger freights coming through at night, with, if we're going to increase amount of people on this, how does that? I guess the, the agreement be sought with there, because these are not just real cars, sometimes obviously you'll have the, um. Freights that contain chemicals inside of them that are going down that track right there, and this is something I think that happens at least monthly that they do, how does that get? Taken care of there?
Mayor wanted to.
This is all considered at the Wasatch Front Regional Council, all of those things are taken into consideration.
All right.
I have, sorry, another question.
Okay.
The proposed density in the renderings, does that meet the HTRZ requirements, or does it exceed them? I know it's, we don't have like specifics, but just the concept of this is high-density versus medium-density?
Yeah, the, the idea there is, is to, is that these would, would meet the goals now, it depends on. One of the things, it depends on how you frame the project, so it, you don't have to achieve fifty units per acre across, uh, the half-mile radius. Um, you can achieve it on an individual, individual site, or, or sites, um, and it really is up to the city on how you want to do it, so when we. When we show five or six-story buildings, those would achieve, uh, that fifty units per acre, um, the, the cap it really is. Is at five-story with, um, structured parking, that's where, for, four and a half stories is where you start to see that fifty units per acre come in. Um, the townhomes are, are down closer to twenty units per acre, so, um, they, they wouldn't meet that, but collectively, if you design it so that. You've got, you know, if you have, uh, you'll say the, the Salt Lake Community College Property, for instance, if you went to eight stories on. One or, one lot, six stories, not a lot, and then did some, some townhomes, you could achieve the fifty over the entire area. The bigger the area, the more HTRZ is available.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, so.
Um, because of time, we are going to thank you and we're going to move on, this has been a lot of work, a lot of collecting information and input, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have fifteen minutes left, so I'm going to challenge Carl to do seven minutes or less. And then Crystal will have the seven-minute or less challenge as well, so Carl's going to be talking to us about an inter-local agreement.
No, okay. Um, good evening, council, uh, hopefully this comes up, and I think we will be able to do this in seven, because. Uh, this is fairly simple, uh, I think at least the reason that it's coming to you. Even though it's a relatively small dollar amount, is that we have, uh, we're proposing an agreement between us and the county, so it's an interlocal agreement. The reason for the agreement is to transfer ten thousand dollars from us, the city, to the county. To pay for a match that the county, uh, a match for a grant that the county received, so. Myself, Anthony Beimont, who's a parks planner at the city, and then Angelo Calasino, who is a parks planner at the county. We together applied for a grant through the Utah DNR, and it had a ten thousand dollar match on it, which is. The reason for the mine transfer, this, uh, drawing is just a rough sketch that we used for the grant application. Showing the general idea, we're getting a design done, the county's getting a design done. Um, but the location is the Jordan River Trail where it meets thirty-three hundred south, the trail goes underneath a bridge there. It's very dark, it's quite scary, depending who you are, um, and the reason the ball got rolling on this is actually. Unfortunately, there were a couple of assaults in this location, and, um, we heard from the police that. The victims said that they felt they had nowhere to go other than under the scary bridge, so, right now. That's true, that, that's really where you have to go, other than the river itself. There is a really narrow gap in the fence there that you could squeeze through, but if you're running from a criminal, that's probably not where you're going to go. So this plan would, uh, move that fence into the Tracy Aviary's property, they're actually renting it from the county, so it's the county's property. Um, to make a wider path that would more safely connect somebody to thirty-three hundred south where they could get away. And even aside from a scary, bad situation, it's just another access point that users of the trail can get on and feel safe and comfortable. Um, so we have, uh, letters of support from the police, we have a letter of support from, uh, the aviary too, they're totally fine moving that fence. Um, I'm not sure if those letters are in your packet, they were used for the grant, but, um, the point is. There's, uh, a lot of coordination between different city departments, fire is excited to get this extra connection, police are excited to have a safer spot. Uh, all we need is to transfer our match to the county.
All right, any questions?
No questions, but I laugh because I'm on that trail all the time and it is scary.
All right.
Thank you.
Validation, all right, thank you so much, Carl, you did a great job of going through that quickly, all right, Crystal. Crystal Maykin will be talking about a budget.
Yes, good evening. All right, uh, so the budget amendment document is in your packet, and, uh, if anyone's watching online, they can. Also view it through the work meeting, um, information that's posted on the website. Uh, we're amending several funds today, the first one that we're going to look at is the general fund. Um, we have, we're proposing an amendment to our facilities department to, uh, update funding. To batch the number of approved employees on their roster, we just missed it. Uh, when we finalized the budget before, and, uh, so now we're picking that up. Um, the next one is to provide funding for grounds maintenance on various city properties. These are properties like greenway spaces, uh, trail pathways, those kinds of things. Um, for us to be able to maintain those properly. Uh, the next one is in addition to the overtime budget for our public works department, specifically. In our, uh, fleet, um, area, uh, they are. That, that department has, uh, some required weekends and on-call time. That requires the, a budget of overtime costs, and so we're just adding that in, we've budgeted that in the past. And, uh, we just need to include it in this budget as well. Uh, next is a budget of four hundred thousand dollars, it's listed as a transfer to. The Transportation Utility Fund, and so you'll see that also in that fund in a couple of minutes. The purpose of that is, as you know, we are working on a roads package for, uh, five or six different roads that. Uh, we're repairing Maxwell, Cordelia, Gregson, our three of them I can think of. And once they got into the streets, they discovered that the sewer and stormwater needs of those. Um, reconstructions were more significant than they originally expected, and so. Um, this is just to address a change order that we received, uh, with regard to those prop, to those projects. And then the last one on the general fund is in addition to, uh, the city council department. For professional fees, uh, in the past, whenever the councils had a need to expend professional. In the past, whenever the councils had a need to expend professional fees, we've been able to absorb it in other departments. But we feel that it's more appropriate to house those costs in the city council department rather than having them in other departments. And so this will just break those out and so to show how those funds are utilized. All right. The next fund that we're going to look at is the capital fund. There are quite a few line items here, and I will say most of them are just carryover items. Whenever we put the budget together, we usually pass it mid-June. And that allows for two or three weeks before the end of the fiscal year. When we prepare the budget, it's with the anticipation that we'll finish certain projects or that certain pieces of equipment or orders will come in before year end. But inevitably, because of shipping or timing or whatever, that doesn't always happen. And so we amend the budget to carry those over into the current fiscal year, so that they can be completed and paid for. So the first one of those relates to fire equipment. It is a carryover item for airbags that were backordered. The second one is also a carryover item of a hundred and forty-four thousand. That is for the Scott School access improvements. That's the new parking lot and some sidewalking, sidewalks and stuff like that that have been done. Most of that is paid for with the CDBG grant of a hundred thousand, and then the city had a match amount of forty-four thousand. The next item is not a carryover item, but it is partially covered with a grant. It is to fund the master plan for the Scott School architecture. And we received a TRCC grant in this fiscal year to be able to to accomplish that master plan for the, for that building. So this amendment item is to add that into our budget, and it recognizes the grant and then also the city's match on that. We had a fifty percent match for that project. The next one is a carryover item for the animal shelter. This year, they received new dog runs and fencing. And this just recognizes the last of that. And then we have found that there is a need at the South Salt Lake Community Center to do some improvements in the auditorium and the facility kitchen to make that space more usable for all of the people who use it. It's almost always rented out. And so this just picks up the cost of making those necessary improvements. Number six on here is for our police station. It's also a carryover item to resurface their parking lot and replace some fencing around that property that has been in need of replacing for several years now. Number seven is for the, for the nine hundred west property. This is a property that we are renting to use for storage of some of our heavy equipment while the public works campus is being built. But in order to use it, there's some infrastructure that needs to be performed on that property. And this just picks up some of that cost. We've budgeted for part of it already. But when we got our bids back, the cost was just slightly higher. And then number eight relates to our Bickley Park. It has some new pickleball courts, but the project wasn't completed until July. And so that, this is just for the carryover of the final invoice on that project. And number nine, we received a grant as well for this project. It will pay for all of the grant, all of the project to design the section of the Mill Creek Trail from two hundred to three hundred west. And that grant is from the Utah Office of Recreation and Parks. And then on the general fund, we are, or I'm sorry, the capital fund, we're almost there. We're adding in a grant that we received from the state forestry grant for our urban forestry project. And we're recognizing a grant from CDBG for an active transport, transportation design project. And then finally, one more grant that we have been awarded to repair lighting along the Parley's Trail and S-line section of, in our city. See, I have three minutes. All right. Next is the public safety special revenue fund. We are adding in five thousand dollars to help them be able to fund their community outreach projects. And then we are also shifting fifty thousand dollars of overtime costs from our fire to our homeless strategies. And that's specifically for our fire personnel who work with our HROs to address needs related to the homeless shelter and the radius around that. And that many, that amount is actually reimbursed later by our state homeless mitigation grant. So that's what that is. The next fund is our stormwater utility fund. The first one is for professional fees that we'll pay for out of their fund balance. And those are to fund their master plan update and the pump station design costs. And that's the result of the rapid growth in our city and the upcoming development. We want to make sure that it's done right the first time. So we're putting those plans together. And then we are also requesting a budget amendment for capital projects to be able to match what was, what the accepted bid was for our pump station upgrade. That bid came in slightly higher than what we had originally hoped that it would. And so this just covers that. And then finally, in the transportation utility fund, you're going to see that other side of that entry that I referred to early, earlier, where we have the additional funding for the road project to address that stormwater and sewer needs. Are there any questions?
Great job. We have one minute for questions. It's a lot, but you explained it well. All right, Crystal, thank you for all that hard work. We will adjourn our work meeting and we will start our regular meeting in one minute. Thank you, everyone.